We're going to get started in, uh, on our presentation on number one, resolution authorizing the Director of Election Day and Emergency Voting to designate vote centers and emergency vote centers. So, um, I would like to see if both of you guys want to come up or just, or just Scott? Scott?
We're on the outside of aisles today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good morning, Scott.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Today is just me. This is our first hearing for, uh, the, um, the Elections Department to present information how we're preparing for the Presidential preference election. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. We will have another hearing in a couple of weeks, and at that point in time, Mr. Valenzuela will be presenting as well.
Well, thanks for being here also, right?
So there are two, uh, in addition to the presentation on how we're preparing for the, the election, we do have two agenda items that we'll be presenting to you for your consideration and approval. Those are related to the voting locations that will be used on Election Day. And I do have them a little bit further on in, in the presentation.
Okay.
But before I, I start the presentation, I just want to discuss something that happened this past week with, uh, the Iowa caucuses, and it just served as a really great reminder for us, for all-
Will there be a pattern after them?
No, the, the-
You got the app, you got the app developed.
Definitely will not. But it just serves as a great reminder that elections can be complicated and that planning and being organized and preparing for those elections is just paramount to us having a success. And if you recall back in December, uh, in mid-December, the border supervisors approved a Election Day and Emergency Voting Plan, and that same week, the recorder approved an early voting plan. And those plans are the framework that we're using to prepare to have a successful Presidential preference election. So, uh, now to start the presentation, I just wanted to go through and highlight where we are in the election cycle. So, that will be the first slide, and it just shows key election dates. And it shows, actually, I want to go back about nine days on February 1st. That was when we mailed out our Uniform Overseas and Citizens Absentee Voting Act ballots. And those actually went out a day early, which is great. So, um, those do fall under in early voting under the recorder's office, but they were able to deliver those. There was fourteen hundred, um, uniformed officers or overseas citizens that received those ballots. They do have up until the very last second of Election Day to make a request, but that was the, the first deadline that we had to meet to send out those ballots. So that's essentially when sort of early voting starts. Um, the next item on the list is February 10th, and that is today. And after, um, we present our, those voting locations for Election Day, and if they're approved, we'll launch our Where Do I Vote webpage, and then all those locations will be posted. So the voters have that information available to them. And then also that Be Ballot Ready app, application, that customized dashboard will, um, be available, and then it will populate where their voting location is.
Right.
So the next, uh, big ticket item here is the voter registration deadline. So that is February 18th. That is actually one day later than normal because of the President's Day holiday that falls on February 17th. So it does allow for that one extra day. And that is when voters, you know, have that opportunity to register by that deadline. If they don't register by then, then the, the election is closed at that point in time. And then the early voting period starts that very next day. We'll be opening, uh, nine early voting locations, and that's when everyone who's on the Pebble Permanent Early Voting List will be mailed their ballot. And then if you just continue down, there is the, the March 10th jurisdictional election. So that is another complicating factor in this election is that we have one week before the Presidential preference election, the Tempe and Chandler jurisdictional elections will be occurring. So we do have, um, and how we're, one of the ways we're overcoming-
They're male only.
They are all male only, and one of the ways we are overcoming that challenge is least to inform the voters is there's two different envelope styles, and we color code those. So for the Presidential preference election, there'll be a red stripe on that envelope, and it says PPE, and then also there will be on the, the ballot itself, a red stripe. So then they can, um, align those two to make sure that they get the right ballot in the right envelope. Then the jurisdictional elections, we use a black stripe and then on, on the ballot as well as the envelope.
Mr. Chairman, what, what happens, what happens if someone mistakenly puts the wrong ballot in the wrong envelope and we get it? And what happens in those cases? What's the process?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Garado, we can, in our early voting boards, we can identify those, and if they've signed those right things, we can hold that ballot back and try to, uh, align it with that envelope. It's not always the case that we're able to do that.
Does that happen a lot?
In the small overlap that we're having, it's, it's not a large, uh, used to when they weren't consolidated on analogistics, you, you haven't seen that. And, and we do have the built-in process at board level.
I mean, if it's not, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead.
But if it's, if it's not very many, a simple phone call, come probably just to let the voters know that there's an error, can they come fix, to modify, say, you know, come sign a new, I mean, if they put the PPE ballot in the jurisdictional envelope, simple telephone call, I hate to have anyone lose their vote because they just accidentally put in the wrong envelope.
Yeah, Mr. Yeah, Mr. Ch-
From a farm.
Mr. Valenzuela, come on, so it's called-
Hey, I asked him.
I thought you wouldn't be able to come up here often.
I asked him. I made the invitation.
Um, but just to clarify, Chairman Supervisor Garado, the fact is that ballot will count, meaning what we do, and when, uh, co-director Jerry was talking about holding it off, will, so we have a March 10 Tempe, and we have the Presidential preference. What we do is we hold that aside so that if the Presidential preference affidavit with the swap ballot comes in, if it never does on, at 7:00 PM after March 10th, we convert that packet to the Presidential preference, meaning the voter, we can identify the voter has requested had a Presidential preference, for example, and we can change that city Tempe. But yes, we, we do reach out to the voters, that on top of that. But they would not lose that vote, we just, because they are swearing to the affidavit, and it is still the voter, we're just, the envelope just says Tempe, we can make it a Presidential preference affidavit.
But, but if I vote a, a Tempe ballot and put in the Presidential preference envelope, that still is okay?
And that-
Do they have to re-sign another envelope?
The Chairman, Supervisor Garado, the answer is if that comes in before March 10th, then we, we would contact them, we could convert it, because it's two separate elections. If it's after March 10th, obviously, it's, you know, that Tempe ballot is no longer valid at that point, the election's over.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Chairman, and then to continue on with the, the key dates, we do have a March 11th date that we like to highlight. So that is, um, that Wednesday before the election, so six days before the election, and that's when we encourage voters to mail in those ballots back to us. That's the earliest or the latest date that the post office will guarantee that we would receive them, um, before the election day. And then the next two highlighted, uh, dates are March 14th and March 16th. That is when emergency voting will occur, and we'll talk about those later on in the, the presentation. And then March 17th is Election Day. I want to provide you an update on our new tabulation equipment. So the photo here shows our precinct-based tabulators and our user acceptance testing that we put them through. We had a, a very lengthy and robust checklist that we use to make sure that all of our equipment met, um, the specifications that were required based on the contract, as, as well as what the, the vendor promised us. And, uh, we were able to do that for not only our precinct-based tabulators. Uh, we did have, actually, our, our vendor performed very well up to this date. We were only anticipating having around 260 pieces of the equipment onboard for the Presidential preference election. The vendor provided them all in January, so we're able to, how the 553 precinct-based tabulators, 553 accessible voting devices, we've onboarded all of those and done user acceptance testings on 100%. There is only, in both those cases, there was four pieces of equipment, um, that didn't meet those specifications that we- meet those specifications that we had to return back to the vendor. They are getting us replacement equipment, but it won't be an issue for the Presidential preference election because we only needed 229, plus an additional 10% as a contingency. So we've already met those thresholds. There is, um, one item in red here and there will be a few items in red. I provided the, the Clerk of the Board a presentation, uh, on Thursday and we've had updates. We've been big, very hard at work trying to update our numbers and recruiting, so I've highlighted those. Anything that changed from what was provided to the Clerk of the Board is highlighted red and it's our ballot box adapters. Right now, uh, we, uh, instead of purchasing new ballot box adapters from the vendor, we wanted to use our old equipment. Served two purposes. One was it was cheaper, it was more cost-effective for the county. Number two, the, the old boxes served as a logistical, um, way that we could deliver, secure our supplies out to the polling locations and then attach the ballot boxes on top of those. And they were very useful for us where the new equipment would not have worked to that capacity. So we asked the vendor to go, instead of buying the, the, the big sturdy box that they were wanting to sell us, we asked them to create an adapter. They took that through EAC certification, they have, it was certified by the Secretary of State in late January and now we have our first delivery scheduled for Wednesday, a hundred and fifty. And then every week thereafter, another hundred and fifty. So these won't be used until Election Day. So even though that number's in red, one out of 553, it won't be a concern for us.
And the Recorder did talk about these adapters on the news this morning.
Oh, and, and they're, they're fantastic, just that we were able to get them through the certification process so quickly and then save that money for the county.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to any further slides, because I think the testing of the equipment is very critical and, and I'm not too sure what all goes involved in terms of the testing, but, um, I'd hate to get to go back to the, the caucus from a week ago and they had this app, they really didn't test it out, tried to use it in sixteen other, sixteen hundred caucus locations and it failed. So when we talk about testing, is it, is it the whole like Election Day type testing where all 200-plus polling sites are, are being utilized at the same time, that type of testing? Or are we just testing one machine after another or?
So, Mr. Chairman Supervisor Garde, um, we threw, there was a pilot period and where we were performing stress tests on our equipment. So we were really putting them through the wringer, our central count tabulators to make sure that they would be able to handle the volume that we would have during a November general election. That's what we were testing too. Um, but then we also then went through individual piece by piece, each piece of equipment and put them through this checklist to make sure that it met those specifications, that there isn't going to be an equipment failure that we didn't test for or couldn't anticipate.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And then the, the last item on the stage that we're on is we're really preparing now for those logic and accuracy tests that where the Secretary of State will come in and perform those. Those are open to the public to observe and we also invite the parties to observe those. So we're in the programming stages. The first one is scheduled for February 18th. That's our new accessible voting device where they're going to test that piece of equipment. And then on March 2nd, they'll come in and test all our central count tabulation as well as our precinct-based tabulators.
Great.
So these are the agenda items before you is to approve the voting locations that we'll be using on Election Day. So there's two items before you. I'll cover the second item first because it's a little bit shorter and that is something that's, um, gone before the Board numerous times before. Every, uh, federal, state and county-wide election, the Board has, um, assigned the responsibility in state statute to approve the voting locations. So on our, our Agenda Item Two, we're, uh, asking the Board to approve 219 assigned precinct-based locations. Thirty of those will be vote centers, which will come in the second Agenda Item. Uh, and then it's also giving, um, me the authority, so if there were an issue with one of those polling locations, say there was unanticipated flooding in one of those locations and we had to move it, that I could then go and find an alternative location, replace that location and then have to report back to the Board, um, that we've made that change or that modification. And then after, um, uh, if the Board does approve these locations, then they will be posted on our website later this afternoon.
Right.
So that's Agenda Item Two. Agenda Item One is a Board resolution, which is providing actually three different items that the Board will be providing resolution on. The first is the use of vote centers on Election Day. So we're planning to have 40 vote centers on Election Day. Ten of those will be unassigned, so they're not attached to a precinct. Um, the other 30 will be attached to a precinct, but in both cases, the voter doesn't know the difference. These are vote-anywhere locations that voter can, uh, visit one of those locations, they'll be available in early voting as well as Election Day and they can get their specific ballot. And then vote that ballot on Election Day, we will have our precinct-based tabulators and this will be something new, a change from what was done in the past, is because of our new tabulation equipment, we can handle tens of thousands of styles of equipment. Our old equipment can only handle, handle a couple dozen. So because of these vote centers, especially in the primary election, we'll have upwards of 7,000, 8,000 ballot styles. They all can be read by those precinct-based tabulators, so we're able to deploy them into the precinct and use that on Election Day. It's a huge improvement. And then also those ballots won't then be going through the signature verification process that, um, the other mail-in ballots would have to go through. And then the, the, Mr. Chairman-
Chairman, yes.
Supervisor Chukri.
Scott, great job with all-
I thought you were just being friendly right there.
I am. I'm just not getting too close to you because you're sick. Just due to comments Mr. Garde made as well and not doubting, there's no doubting on the side of the table, however, given what did happen in 16, tell us the calculus one more time on the 229, how we got there. I like the fluidity you're talking about as it relates to the vote, the 40 vote anywhere, uh, the cautionary 10. But tell, tell us just the calculus, let's just make sure, I know we have better equipment, which is a large part of that calculus, um, but we had lines, we had, you know, the unexpected happened and, and we did not expect the unexpected in 16. So, given what's happened so far, uh, back east and, uh, which is a dismal failure, we certainly want to be, use every abundance of caution as well as make sure we have every tool deployed.
So, Mr. Chairman Supervisor Chukri, in 2016, there were 60 vote-anywhere locations that were used and in the 2016 election, it was both Democrats and Republicans participating in that election. Also, there wasn't a robust marketing campaign to get the word out on who was eligible, eligible to vote. So there are many independents that did turn out and expecting to be able to vote. So with the 229, we're more than tripling the number of locations, but we're also adding additional check-in stations. So in 2016, there were two check-in stations per voting location. Now we're increasing those to be six per location. So based on our modeling, the lines, even if people showed up in that last two-hour period, they should wait approximately 30 minutes or less. That was the calculus that we were going to, that people wouldn't have to wait longer than 30 minutes on average. So to keep those lines short. But we also are deploying one extra, uh, poll worker per location and that is the line management clerk. And that line management clerk is actually, and we'll get to this a little bit later, but they are going to be trained to have those conversations with those voters if those independents do show up and to be able to describe what a Presidential preference election is and who's eligible to vote and then provide them with contact information on if, if they're still upset, trying to get them out of the line so that they could take that tangible piece of, that document with them and then know where they could call to complain, which will be Mr. Valenzuela.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I apologize. Going back to Mr. Chukri's point and just a clarification, that was under the impression we had 229 voting locations. It sounds like I was wrong. It's 109 or 219 and 10 set aside just in case? Am I understanding wrong?
So, Mr. Chairman Supervisor Garde, sorry if I confused you. We will have 229 actual locations. There will be 189 assigned precincts, there'll be 40 vote centers. Then those vote centers, there's 30 of those vote centers that are assigned and is part of a precinct. So we have identified, oh, this precinct actually will work to serve both, as a vote center as well as, as that assigned precinct that those voters will be notified, um, when they receive that sample ballot, just about 10 days before the election, telling them where to vote as far as their assigned precinct.
And Mr. Chairman Scott, so, because I've always, and I wouldn't, I couldn't tell you how to come up, I always felt that there should be some type of a formula to determine how many polling sites we should have. I couldn't tell you what that formula would be. I leave it to you all, you're all the experts. Help us understand how, how we copied, going back to Chukri's point, how we came up to 229. Now I can tell you what I'd done and I just went to all my little LDs in my supervisor district, showed on the map and said, hey, you guys tell me what you think. Tell me where, where we should have some of these polling sites. I went to the legislators, you guys tell me. And they were able to kind of say, yeah, I think we need one here, 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 here. So that's how kind of, but again, that's not a formula. That's just their own general knowledge of their legislative districts and, and that sort of stuff. So how exactly did we come up with 229? To know that 229 is significant and how many voters are assigned per polling site? If everyone was to show up, which ain't, not going to happen, but if everyone was decided we're going to go out and vote, how many voters would go?
So, Mr. Chairman Supervisor Garde, we did use a formula, so exactly how you're describing. So we went back and we looked at in-person voters in 2016 Presidential preference election, 2016 primary election, as well as in the 2018 primary election. Every person that had it voted and then we applied a factor of increased voter registration numbers. And we use that to determine how many potential in-person voters would vote at each location. And our threshold was no more than a thousand. But, and we did not even come close to that as far as this Presidential preference election. We were mostly around 700 at the high end and many were much lower, 400 or between the 400 and 500 range, voters per polling location that we anticipate turning out on Election Day. So that's where we're able to confidently project that lines would stay on average for voters, even if they showed in that peak period, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, right around 30 minutes. And that would only be in those, those, those extreme instances or those cases where we had a few that were right around the 700 location, our voters per location.
Okay, thank you.
And going back to your comment on Supervisor Garde, on the formula that we use, this is a heat map, a point density map, and you have a larger version of it under the presentation in front of you. And this was what we used to identify where those vote centers should be located and the emergency voting locations should be located. So anywhere that there is a darker color on the map, you can identify, oh, that's where more in-person voters are likely to turn out. So we made sure to place a vote center close to that during early voting and for Election Day. And then for those emergency voting, um, locations that will be open on the 14th and the 16th, we also identified and there are seven of those. So in the plan that we discussed for that emergency voting, it was that we were going to have one, uh, location per Board of Supervisor District and then one at the Mace Office and one at McTech Office. However, when we put together that plan and finalized those emergency voting locations, we realized that the Southwest Valley had a, a gap of coverage. And if you were in Hila Bend, you'd have to drive all the way from Hila Bend either Surprise or to McTech. And so the emergency voting locations on the map that's in front of you, they're in the pink color, all the other voting locations are in the yellow color. So we've moved the, the location that was at our McTech or the, uh, Maricopa County Tabulation Center to Tolusen to provide that coverage for the Southwest Valley.
Okay.
Um, other ways that we determine locations for the other 189 location is, one of the biggest complaints that voters, um, provide as far as locations is having to vote in a different location. So we always went back and we looked, is that voting location that they've used before available? For the Presidential preference election, we aren't allowed to use the full 500 or that we would use for the primary and general because state law says that we have to cut that in half. So we weren't able to, for every voter to use that at their exact same location that they voted in before, but that was a factor that we considered in identifying these locations. And then we also make sure that they have the availability of size, um, to handle the six site books and the voting booths and the potential turnout. And then we use that geographic trends and this point density map. So just a reminder on what emergency voting actually is. So it's if someone had an unforeseen circumstance that would prevent them from voting on Election Day and it's after 5:00 PM on Friday and before 5:00 PM, so Friday, uh, four days before the election and Monday, the day before the election, 5:00 PM. So if it occurs in those timeframes, we will be opening, and it's on the next page, seven voting, emergency voting locations. And there's, and those show the dates and the hours that those seven voting locations will be open. Those voters, if they turn out in person to vote, they are required to sign an affidavit. This is a update in state statute that has them attest that they are actually experiencing an emergency and those voters will sign that. We've included that as part of the envelope that they're signing and that'll be returned to us, um, back at the Elections Department.
Do they have to state what that emergency is?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Garde, no, they do not. They just have to attest that they are actually experiencing an emergency.
Little Johnny has soccer practice now, is that an emergency?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Garde, statute did not define what-
An emergency is?
What those emergencies were. So with, and then for us to be able to validate what is a true emergency, are they experiencing an emergency? Is an email sufficient that their boss is having them leave town? Um, so based on state statute and based on guidance from the Secretary of State's in that manual, we've used that exact language and we've just affixed it to the affidavit.
Mr. Chair, just a question on that, Mr. Jared. So again, emergency voting, that's in your title, right? That, that's a part of your title. Is this, will this look like, if somebody walks in, will this look like an early voting site or will this look like an Election Day site? What will it look like?
So, Mr. Chairman Supervisor Gates, that's, um, actually, the beauty of this, this agreement is that we aren't having to set up different locations. That would increase potential risk for the location. So they would look as much like an Election Day site as possible, except we won't have the precinct-based tabulator set up there. So that won't get set up until that Monday, or Monday night and then open the polls on that Tuesday, uh, Election Day. So that would be the only difference between a Election Day site and an emergency voting site. Thank you.
Great question.
The next update is on how are we going to be setting up our technology at the polling locations? And, uh, Mr. Chairman, you sent out an email just last week inviting county employees to help and participate in this selection department. We've had fantastic turnout. We've had over 350 county employees, um, request to, to participate in this election. We'll be using 60 of those county employees to, to serve on our setup teams. So the day before election, the troubleshooter and the, and inspector are going to serve as the primary, um, uh, folks that are responsible for setting up that equipment, but then we're going to have that county employee serve as like an auditor, going out and inspecting those, that equipment with a checklist and make sure it's set up correctly and then reporting back to, um, the Election Department that it truly is set up or if there's an, there's an issue occurring. And all of that will occur on that Monday before the Election Day.
What, what kind of training goes into that? So they've signed up, um, so what's the expectations of the county employee then, who decides to, uh, help us in whatever election that might be? What, what, uh, what are they signing up for?
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, the week before, we want to provide this training as close to the election as possible. Uh, it's not very difficult to set this equipment up. It's about like setting up their Xbox or Playstation. Um, we're also going to be asking them to set up our accessible voting device or at least confirming that they're set up correctly. So we will provide them, it'll be a couple hour training, so where they get that expertise, where they feel confident, where they know how to set that equipment up. Um, and that will happen that week before or that weekend prior. And then on that Monday before, we will, and that week before, we'll also be sending out them their assigned locations. So each, uh, because we have 60 employees on that Monday, we have 189 voting locations that need to be set up, approximately three locations per county employee that they'll be responsible for. And they'll be provided that list, that route that they're, uh, will be tasked with and then they can go through that route and make sure that all that equipment is set up. It, it won't be a difficult job and I would believe that it'd be very enjoyable that a county employee can, um, get out there and experience how to help the selection department serve the vote- the voters of Maricopa County.
Great. Thank you for that.
Do you have, Mr. Chair, just to follow up on that, you have contingencies for, I mean, again, it's, we could get a rainstorm, and, I mean, again, let's say we have a terrible, you have contingencies for that?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, yes, absolutely, we have contingencies. And part of the county employee themselves are serving as a contingency. So, the first line is the inspector and the troubleshooter, which we'll go through that very similar training to set it up. That county employee, then one of those 60 is the second line of defense. And we do have a third line of defense, which is our TTEC group. And we have hotlines set up that, with much more experienced folks that have an IT background, a help desk-related background, that that can be deployed. We've also partnered with, there were seven county facilities that are allowing us to use full-time equipment supply depots, where we'll be storing equipment in those depots that if we needed to respond, say, one of the site books, it was working appropriately, when we tested it here at McTech, we've sent it out to that location. Now, there's an issue during setup. One, the troubleshooter, the TTEC, or the county employee could go to that supply depot, get a replacement, and then return it back to that location. So, there's redundancy after redundancy after redundancy.
Great.
Chairman, and if I may, just one of the key points is, Chairman, to your point, Supervisor Gates, is that one of the other things that we have, that it's addressing the elephant in the room, the site books that didn't get set up, if you will, we now have deployed a dashboard. So, we actually will see real time, it's not just word of mouth, we will see the connectivity of those 1,400 site books, real time. So, when they are not, we don't necessarily have to wait for that word of mouth. We can see that it is not connected to our network. So, we will have that, to know that 60 are not connected, or whatever number, that it will be zero, because we won't leave on Monday till they're all connected.
That's great.
It's great news.
So, the next slide is related to our poll worker recruitment and training. So, we'll be providing hands-on, in-person training to over 1,600 of our poll workers. That, in order to be able to accomplish that, that is 75 different courses, because we're limiting attendance to be a max of 25 participants per class. We really wanted them to have that hands-on learning experience, so that they can use the new equipment, especially the new tabulators. This will be the first time that those poll workers are experiencing those. So, they have that experience to learn them in the polling location. Also, another change in the training is we're really making that manual a user-friendly manual. And we're in class, we're having those poll workers participate in a scavenger hunt. So, not only are we providing them training, but we're having them go through the manual and identify areas that they will then be able to reference back and use on Election Day, so they can take notes in the sidebar of the manual, and then keep that with them. So, if they go out to the polling location, they have that reference material. And now they know how to use the manual. They know where to find the information. That's a huge improvement over what's been provided in the past. We're also deploying a computer-based training program through, we've partnered with the county's Department of Learning and Management. They've provided us access, the ability to use the hub, so the county's learning management system. So, then we can deploy this learning tool, and this, it takes about 45 minutes for the participant to take, and it also quizzes them, so we can assess their knowledge, and make sure that they have the knowledge and the capacity to be able to serve in the polling location. And then also make sure that we're providing a consistent level, a baseline of training, to all of our poll workers. And it covers topics such as things related to the state statutes, what is the presidential preference election, what is customer service, and how, what is the level expectation that we provide to those voters when they're, when they arrive at a polling location. Then the last slide that I have, that I'm covering, is the number of, just an update on where we are from a staffing goal perspective and the number of staff. And again, here's where there's those red highlights that are showing what changed from Thursday to Friday. And it's really all those numbers increased, which is a good thing. That doesn't always happen, because every once in a while, you do get some poll workers that have an emergency or realize that they committed, that they can work for us, and then they came back and said, no, that they can't. But we've made great progress. We're at 72% fully staffed. And the biggest areas that we're lacking is in the voter registration clerk and the line management clerk. The line management clerk is going to be those county employees. That email went out just over a week ago. We've contacted every one of those, and we've actually now, I confirmed this morning, we've staffed 45 of those, and they plan to have all 60 of the setup team staffed by the end of day today. And then we'll transition those other 290 county employees to our poll worker recruitment team, that we'll start contacting them this week, and get those employees staffed and work in that line management clerk. And we're working with the recorders' office. We're using a deputy registrar listing to hire from, and then we'll be transitioning into those county employees as well. So, the fact that those are low numbers, they are not of concern to me at all at this point in time. I'm confident that they will be hired within the next two weeks, when we meet again, and provide you the list of, the roster of poll workers to approve for the election.
And, Mr. Chair, this is on, the Election Day is on St. Patrick's Day, so is everyone gonna be required to wear green, or anyone getting pinched?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, that is a very nonpartisan thought. Well, I guess there's a Green Party for, but they're not currently...
They're not participating in the Democratic Presidential Election.
And the last thing I just wanted to highlight is, we have hired 200, over 200 bilingual poll workers as well. There are some areas that we're still finding, there's a few gaps that we're looking to recruit those bilingual poll workers for. And then we also, we don't just make sure that we have one in those polling locations. For those regions that we've historically found to be high Spanish-speaking, we make sure that we have two or three poll workers that are bilingual and can serve those poll workers. So, that covers the presentation that I had for you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Are there any questions? Any questions?
Just a, well, go ahead, you, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, thank you for the work you all have done. This is awesome. I do want to also mention, thank you on the bilingual boardwork, because I think it's critical, you know, especially if you have a first-time voter who, who's their first time going in and experiencing it, and if there's not someone that can communicate with them, these voters won't ever come back. They won't. It's just like customer service at any business, they just won't come back. That's why I think it's really critical to have the bilingual boardworkers at all the sites. But talk to me about Election Day. We go, you have the training with all this good stuff here, and I think it's, I love the training component to it as well. I think it's pretty intense. But if there is a situation on Election Day that something happens, I'm assuming there's a hotline or some, tell me what's gonna happen on Election Day to respond to any type of emergency that may occur, something that we're not thinking about, you know, talk to me about that.
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gardo, you're absolutely right. We do have hotlines in place. So, we have four separate hotlines. First is the poll worker hotline, that if poll workers are encountering issues on Election Day, they can call that hotline. And that's, and those hotline staff members are really, are certified election officers. The majority of those are staffed by individuals that are trained and experienced in Election Day. So, they can help walk those poll workers through an issue. But if they aren't able to, then that leads right over to our troubleshooter hotline, which then that troubleshooter can be deployed. But if it...
How many troubleshooters?
So, we'll have just over 50 troubleshooters in this election. There'll be about four locations per troubleshooter. But if that hotline call taker realizes that this is much more technical issue, we can then immediately dispatch that to that next higher level, that TTEC hotline, that technical hotline, to be able to respond with that help desk level response, if it is an emergency. But the other beauty is, we're moving all of our hotlines into one command center. So, this will give leadership, myself, Mr. Valenzuela, the other leaders in the department, insight into what's happening on all those Election Days. So, if there's a common thing, theme going along, occurring with our vote centers, or in one region, we can see that and deploy the resources necessary.
And that, part of that team is legal counsel, I'm hoping, should any legal issues occur?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gardo, yes, we have our communications team that will be part of that, our leadership from the Elections Department, the legal team, staff on there. We have the ACTIC is involved as well, so the Arizona Counterterrorism and Information Center. So, we partnered with all those folks, we actually have some upcoming events with our emergency management to go through and identify some of those contingencies on how we would be able to deploy resources and respond if there were an emergency.
And I would only suggest to, talking about the public information folks, the media side, is to be able to maybe even already communicate with them, and start talking to the media now. You know, Iowa's biggest mistake is they didn't know how to respond, and they left the media in the dark. And, but I think that constant communication, which I think you guys do all the time anyways, with that constant communication with the media, if something was to happen, it can, you know, my biggest fear is someone's gonna tweet something out, it then gets retweeted, it's viral, and if it's fake or not true, we need to squash it right away. Otherwise, it becomes truthful.
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gardo, we're not only relying on the Elections Department Communication Team and the Recorder's Communication Team, we're asking communication professionals from the county to come in and assist, so they can monitor our social media accounts, but also other social media accounts in the public, to be able to do just that. To, if they identify that there's misinformation going on, maybe they're putting out information that a polling location's closed and that actually hasn't, that we can go out there, have that account disabled, refute that information, and get the correct information out to those voters.
Great. Well, before we get to the business part of the meeting, because I look like I'll be looking for two different motions for item one and two, I just wanted to thank you, Scott and Ray, for being here. During my chairman's address, I asked the board, this is gonna be the number-one priority of, at least my term as chairman, but for the county to run fantastic elections. We'll have three of them at least in this term. So, I want to thank you guys for your participation. There's new things that are occurring, and maybe what we found out that worked relatively well in former elections, now we're really putting our shoulder into that, especially when it comes to recruitment. I want to thank the county employees that, I did that chairman's call to action, but it was basically this board's call to action. It worked very well to entice county employees to spend a day working with us and the Elections Department to pull off a great election. Adrian Fontes is here today, county recorder, to monitor, to show, I believe, the participation and the partnership that we're going to continue to do, to the point where we're gonna have three great elections. One thing I might register also, as we get a little bit further into it, I'm very interested to hear from people that have worked prior elections, and to notice any changes, if they have more suggestions, if they are saying great things about a topic, if they're saying negative things. It's going great, it's going rough. We, our board needs to hear those types of things, especially as we do this presidential preference election. I would like to hear from workers first, before I hear from voters. I do not want to have a repeat of any type of what occurred in the Iowa caucuses. We are putting some money towards this in both technology, training, everything else, to try to avoid just that, that type of episode. And we do have new technology that's coming to bear in this Democratic presidential preference election. And we really hope that that works so smooth that it's gonna be on focus for all of the voters on these upcoming general, or primary and general elections in August and November. So, I don't know if there's any other, yes, sir, Scott?
I have invited the county auditors to attend some of those trainings and provide some of that input, too, so that independent source, to be able to determine, are we providing a consistent training amongst all the different groups or participants? So, that would be one avenue, too, to seek that type of input.
That's fabulous. That is, that is great. Okay. With that, do I have a motion on item number one?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item one, the resolution authorizing the Director of Election Day Emergency Voting to designate the voting centers and emergency vote centers.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number two. I hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move item number two, that we designate the polling places for the presidential preference election.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Now, we are going to reconvene in executive session on a couple doors over. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Adrian, thank you for being here today. And we will go into executive here shortly. Five-minute break?